Good evening and welcome to the night's special board meeting. Time is 6:06 PM. Please join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and every being just as one.
Please remain standing until we move the sign. Thank you. Any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Mr. President Trustees and members of the House. Yes, sir, Mr. PresidentTrustees, if you'd like to delete BF3 completely. BF3, which is Discussion and Possible Action on Approval of Library Boarding Corporation and Emergency Daily Event Notification System. The system will also include customized notices for attendance and library key recurring programs. I'd like to delete that completely.
All right, so let him proceed.
Mr. Santos, can I just share something? Welcome back to school. Welcome, everyone, to be together. Thinking about our students as they started school, so welcome back. Also, just wanted to say, we know that there's a lot happening in Houston right now. There's a lot of devastation with the flooding, and I bet many folks here in our community either have family or friends that are in Houston and are affected in some way. So, just want to bring that forth, and I know there's some folks that came to the Valley to, you know, stay here while all the flooding's happening in Houston. So, we just keep Houston and all those votes in our thoughts and prayers. That's it.
From all those lines, Mr. Trustee, if there's a need to open our doors for some of those kids that have been displaced or will be displaced, what is it, do we have a plan of action for that?
Actually, Ms. Lugo and I had a conversation today. We have had a couple of families that came in, and so, as per our conversation, we granted them to come on board. We're kind of doing a little waiver with some of the detailed information that we're asking of the other students. The thing we're really asking is, obviously, when they drove down here to get a photo ID of America that drove down here, and after three to four weeks, if the students stood alone, hopefully by then things have kind of cleared up in the area they came from, then we will come back in to get the more in-depth information than we would normally ask for the need to the district. So, yes, the answer is yes, we have. We're being very lenient with it because of the unfortunate situation that happened over there.
I don't know, we need a... Since this is not on the agenda, please go reach out.
Just a comment. Mr. President Trustees, BF1, under Business Finance, BF1, Discussion and Possible Action Budget Amendments for the General Operating for the Month of August 2017. I do have in your packet the information, and Mr. Senator Martinez is here. Understand, obviously, that what you approved last week was the actual budget for September 1, 2017, through August 31, 2018, with the expected revenues and the expected expenditures. What we have here is still the items that are still pending because we still have a few days before August 31st. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Senator Martinez.
Thank you, Superintendent, board members, and committee members and colleagues. Yes, this is our final budget amendment for fiscal year 2016-17. The primary, the main reason that we prepared this was so that we could actually transfer money in from our general operating to our health insurance fund. After reviewing the expenses, we found that we're going to be short about close to $2.5 million. So, because of that, where if you look at the bottom of the, where it says Other Uses, Budget Amendment Summary for General Operating Fund, there's $2,740,298 that are being transferred out. Those we're going to transfer into Fund 753. It's the fourth page. After those two pages, there's a Health Insurance Fund Budget Amendment Summary. And as you can see, our budget was $19,024,451. We're increasing it by $2,740,298 for the total ending balance of $21,764,749. So, that should cover for all the expenses that are going to come in in August, for August and September. And that's the main reason for presenting these today. Any questions?
So, where is the money coming from?
The fund balance, operating fund balance.
And that's for, to cover medical?
The Health Insurance Fund, Fund 753, which is pharmacy and the medical insurance premiums that we pay, claims.
So, it's 2.7 or 2.5?
We actually, we had estimate 2.5, but we put in a little bit more because we're not sure of all the claims that might hit for August and September. We didn't want to be sure.
So, these are all those claims that are out there but haven't been, during the, in the system but haven't been paid out?
Yeah, usually, like, the following month is when we receive the bulk of the claims.
What was the original amount that had been vested into this account?
And that was after we increased it to 505. We have like a 505 contribution from the employer side.
Any other questions on that?
Mr. Martinis, you mentioned a word that's really stuck out to me is the word "final amendment budget." Considering we don't have any type of disaster anything in the future, we shouldn't have to be playing with this moving anymore.
This is the final amendment for fiscal year 2016-17. Our new school year starts on Friday, September 1st, and so that'll start a whole new, whole new year. So, yes, this is final for 2016-17.
Okay, recommendation?
Administration recommends approval, Mr. President Trustees?
Is the recommendation to approve the budget amendments? Need a motion?
Submove.
It's a motion by Mr. Abilan?
Second.
Second by Ms. Raina, all in favor? Or opposed?
I oppose.
I've got two in favor, one opposed.
What are options?
You need to reconcile your debts by the end of the month. So, if it doesn't pass tonight, then you already don't have any other options. You have to come back in September 1st and try to move again.
Is that correct? But even if we do that, now we're tapping into what Mr. Billman just alluded to, Otto Bill, that September 1, 2017, through August 31, 2018, that's when we really, really want to be very stringent and not have any amendments, especially from the general fund.
Right.
From fund balance. And if we don't approve this tonight, and...
Yeah, these expenses are for fiscal year 2016-17, not 2018, so...
These are already expenses that have already occurred.
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, it's like, we can't...
Okay, and let me add just something else, and we're still in discussion a little bit. These are, today is August the 29th. We still have a few days. Those, whatever comes in is going to be picked, they're going to be part of this amendment that Ms. Martinez mentioned, anything. And we are going to have some other items coming in September 1 and thereafter. That will be paid off of the new budget.
They get approved back to the...
It's like a roll-up every single year. Last year, we had the same scenario, the year before, the year before, because you can't just have a freeze frame and say, "We're done." September 1, things are going to be coming in, but they're going to be tacked into the new budget. Correct?
And in September, we will receive expenses for the insurance that will be for August. Those get approved back to August.
Paid by the...
Yes.
And it's basically, at this point in time, it's, we've got to reconcile the books.
Yes, sir.
And, I mean, these are expenses that have already occurred. I mean, there's no way to go back and, I mean, find somewhere else to pull money from because it's already been done.
That, this is it. This is the end of the year, this fiscal year.
In favor?
I also am in favor.
Motion carries.
BF2, Mr. PresidentTrustees, discuss a possible action to approve IHR transport to ship three to five more loads of leased computers to Gardena, California, inside investment warehouse. And the rationale for this is that because of the threshold that we do have now that 25,000 or more has to come before the board, Mr. Chavez had anticipated that it was going to be under that, but looking at the loads, it's going to take more. So, instead of having to put them on hold, this is why he brought these, because we're going to need additional truckloads to take the computers that if you went to the campuses, especially the middle schools and some of the elementaries, we saw them in the hallways and the pallets. These are things that have to go back. So, this is why he's bringing it to, we're bringing it for your approval because it would exceed the 25,000 threshold we began from this.
I have a question. Can we, are we going to...
Sure.
Why was this not, Mr. Chavez, why was this not included when we gave these? Who was the person or the company that we bought these computers from? And why was that not, I mean, we knew that it was, eventually they would have to go back, back to them. Why was that not included in the original plan?
Yeah, that was pretty, more members and president and superintendent. It wasn't disclosed back then. I didn't have the copy of the contract, so I wasn't aware of what the information was then, which is recommended. And that information was, was informed to the ex-supervisor that we had before, but it was never conveyed to me. And these expenses were hidden expenses. It was a surprise for me too, as well, so that we had, we had to do something about trying to get that shipped in.
And we could have just left them in the warehouse until the company, they're there, they're yours, complete them up?
No, it doesn't work like that, sir. That would still charge us rent for that. Matter of fact, we're up due September 1st, and we have to...
But if that wasn't disclosed, I mean, I would think that something like that should have been disclosed at the time that the contract was, that the offer was made.
Yeah, we have to get able to look at the contract more thoroughly on that part.
It just sounds like it wasn't a part of the contract, but you weren't part of the contract, like bidding process and all that, right?
I was part of the bidding process, but on the, on the finances side, I wasn't, now that we have more one-to-one with CFO and all that, we're able to view the contracts and everything. I need to be aware of that, too.
So, who's responsible in not disseminating information? Like you're saying that you weren't aware, I mean, you're, you're doing this, but in reality, who's responsible? I'm asking you, tell me, tell me so that I understand why we're trying to put out these expenditures for, for this movement of computers. Help me understand who's responsible here. Somebody's got to be in charge. There's got to be some checks and balances throughout this district. And that's something I've been continuously asking in a lot of these things, and there is no checks and balances. So, you're kind of passing the buck, saying that you weren't aware of it. Well, who is?
I'm not, I'm not passing the buck. I was not involved in that, in that process or the...
Who was? Who was?
I would not know, sir. I would not know on that business side.
I believe, sir, if I can answer, the people that were in charge are no longer with the district. You know, it was, we had a former CFO, and then we had a former superintendent. And so, this contract was like for, was like four years, three years? It's three years, so it was three years ago. And of course, the knowledge went with them. I'm sure that they were aware, but they, there's nobody there to inform us. So, we're just reading and trying to catch up and, you know, be on top of everything that might come through. And that, that's just how...
So, at that time, we had a preview, we had another purchasing agent?
Yes, sir.
We had another giant agency? Superintendent, do we have, were you there or were you...
I was there.
But you were, you were not included in the...
Not on the finances side. I recommend, I bring it to the board, and you all give me the permission to proceed. But on the finances side, I wasn't too involved in that. I don't, I don't get myself involved with the finances, so... But now we are, I'm getting more involved.
Now, the question I did have, Mr. Chavez, obviously, we have what's in control right now. What are we doing, what's the kind of action with the computers that we just purchased, that we just brought in? And the response was...
That we're going to be leasing to purchase options to buy for a dollar. That we wouldn't have to go through that. But we're going to do, say it one more time when we do the refresh on the elementaries on 2019, that summer, we're going to, we're going to feel that same.
So, the, the computers that we bought right now that you're, you just installed into most of the campuses at the end of year three?
It's, I believe it's a four-year plan?
Four years. Okay, so at the end of year four?
We're going to have the option to buy, and we want to buy for a dollar.
For a dollar?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what happens to the ones that we say, you know what, we don't want, we're only going to keep half of them, and the other half, they're there, you come pick them up, and they're going to pick them up at their expense, or we're going to have to ship them again, and we're going to have to go through all this?
We'll probably have to ship them to...
So, it was under the same contract?
No, it's different contract. This is a different contract with Bell Financial Services.
The ones that, that will be expiring next year?
Oh, that one, yeah.
That's under the same scenario?
Yes, previous one, yes, that's from inside.
So, how much has been spent so far on shipping?
Right now, right now, I'm shipping, it's been 22,414, 72 cents.
So far.
That's why I brought it to you tonight, that way, we know that we're going to probably need, I'm estimating no more than four loads, because we noticed that the pallets were bigger, so we had to kind of adjust the size of the boxes. And then I told them to go ahead and add another load, which we were putting 16. Now, I told them to put 20 instead of 16 because, you know, we need to try to maximize the loads. So, that's what we're doing right now.
So, it's down in the box?
Well, yeah, loads, just loads.
Oh, okay.
24 pallets, and then the truck, we normally put 26 pallets in the truck, but with the, the bigger pallets that are coming in, I don't know why the pallets are bigger. For whatever reason, we need to, we only can put 24 pallets instead of 26. So, that's kind of like throwing me off a tremendous amount. So, I have to make it up with an extra load.
So, what is estimated to be total after all this, after everything?
For everything? I would say upon maybe around in the 70s.
70,000?
75,000.
For shipping?
Not just for shipping, for the material and everything, overtime.
Well, is it the, the...
The overtime and all.
The work and the package, packaging materials, right?
Bubble wrap.
The bubble wrap?
What happens at this time if no action is taken or we won't approve?
We'll still have to continue paying the rent for those, those systems, you know.
And how much is the rent?
Right now, we're at month-to-month, $32,000.
I mean, just, so I think that this contract is said and done, right? It is what it is this year right now?
That's right.
So, we need to pay for it this year. And I'm imagining, if that was true, whatever the contract entails for this upcoming one, that we have allocated expenses for this in the budget.
I will include it there next, next, for 2019, 2018, 2019, I will include that.
And the ones that we just received, that's, we're going to get caught up in the same scenario?
Not necessarily, no.
The ones that you just received, you said option to buy for a dollar.
Okay, so it's either they, we can say, you know what, we're going to keep it for a dollar?
Might as well. It would be less work for us as, as overtime, we don't have to pay overtime like we're paying right now to rush and take them off, you know. And it was, it was, you know, it's business turning, you know.
You saw the copy of the contract? Obviously, because...
After, after the fact, I haven't seen it, no.
So, there is one?
There is a contract.
Okay, so, basically, you're going to need to get a copy to each one of these board members of that contract? Very quickly, it doesn't have to be today, but we need to have one. Looking at the, at the rankings that you have there, there's some weird numbers here. I mean, you got one that says...
The question is only on the trucking, though, not the top one.
The one, to look at the same one that I asked you about?
Yes, that's right, only the trucking, the shipping, though.
Put in the next one where it says the Spirit Trucks and Central.
Okay, so you got Home Depot that's just for boxes?
That's just a material and all that. That, that, you can just disregard that. It's only the, the last three, which is...
Spirit, IHR, and Central. Is that IHR, is that that, are you putting them on the river?
No, sir. They have a local company out of Houston near Dona, so I wanted to use the local.
So, it's going to go on a, on a truck?
It's common and trailer trucks.
Okay, so basically, the Spirit Trucks is going to be less by about almost $2,000 per load? Am I correct?
That's correct.
200?
200, yeah.
It's because what I'm looking at... What I'm looking at is this page.
Right.
Because what you gave us here doesn't make any sense. Okay, all this stuff is just thrown in here.
No, it's not, it's not. Normally, what we have to do for purchasing, we have to provide them with three pulls, and then we got to do the ranking. So, if you go down to where it says Spirit, and AI, HR, Transport, and then Central, those are the ones that are in question tonight.
Okay, those are the three that I had?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have Spirit Truck Logistics for $20,800?
Do I have what?
Is that the price that you have, $20,800?
That's $20,800, yes.
And IHR is $22,400?
That's correct.
So, that's about 1,500 more?
Wrong. It's a $200 difference per load, yes, sir.
Oh, per load, okay.
And it's, on the description I put there is, it was, it was, I was estimating eight loads, but then again, like I said, the pallets are bigger, and then we're, we're, we need to put more boxes in the pallet. Now, from 16, we're going to go to 20. And that way, we can correct that mistake.
So, it'll be fewer loads?
Hopefully, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that it can be less than four loads. But I don't want to come back again, you know, again and again, and have to go over the 25,000. So, I say, you know what, if they made four loads, no more than four loads, we should take care of that.
So, why are you willing to pay more for the shipping?
It's only $200 difference, sir, and the...
That's per load, though?
Per load, per load.
What's the total, what's the total difference?
On the total difference, at four eight loads, it was, let's see, $2,400.
Which one are you asking about, Coach? So, Spirit is $2,600 per load?
Right.
And IHR is $2,800 per load? So, Spirit is less?
Right. I is selling Spirit.
Oh, okay.
I went with I, I, IHR because they're local, and they've done business with them prior business with them before.
But you're hoping to get down to four loads versus eight?
But Spirit, Spirit is...
We already, yes, but I, IHR is from Donna. We already done, we're going to be doing the eight load already.
Oh, okay.
This, this week, we're going to send out the eight load. I'm coming to the board to ask for four more loads. I might not use a fourth load. But like I said, I'm trying to get more, more boxes in the pallet and utilize that trailer so that we can try to minimize the load.
So, you've already contracted IHR?
Yes, we have.
In the past, right?
In the past, and right now, we're, we're going right now with it, and that's what, that's the rubric that we use. And I'm estimating because now it's going to go over the $25,000 cap that you all put into place. So, I'm going to go over the 25, so now I ask you permission to, you know, to get your approval so that I can move on forward with, with shipping this box.
My fellow board members, is there like a concern with the vendors?
I, I feel like... No, my, my concern is with the price. Why are we paying the extra to get them shipped? We're shipping stuff out. Ship it out, save yourself a couple of thousand, and that's it.
Sometimes it will go, it's what you get, you pay for sometimes, I'm saying, because I know that we went with, matter of fact, with the upgrade, right? And we've been having a lot of issues because we went the lowest cost. So, in my mind, I said, well, you know what, Central is too high, let me go with a middle person, you know? And they already done business with us too, so I feel comfortable doing business with, with a relationship that we have with this trucking company. Okay?
Sir, do you have any relatives in regards to IHR transport?
No relatives, sir. They're out of Houston, and then they have, they have a subsidiary business here in...
Anybody else have any other questions? Administration recommends approval, Mr. PresidentTrustees?
I believe we approve.
There's a motion by Ms. Raina to approve, second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor, the favor.
Or opposed? Okay, I'm opposed. Motion carries.
We're going on to Human Resources, HR. We have HR 1, PresidentTrustees, and this is something that on a yearly basis, we grant to you as trustees for approval. This is Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the 2017-2018 Student Code of Conduct for Don ISD. And of course, the code of conduct is updated annually in accordance to any changes in the Texas legislature related to Chapter 37 of the Education Code. This, this was as follows in the preview of Mrs. Iggy Agudel, who's now our Director for Intake and Student Engagement, to review that and make any and all adjustments that come forth after the special session. Obviously, we still have some of them. And so, now, you've got the updated one, and unless you have any questions, Administration recommends approval because from here, we'll be sending it out to all the campuses and also putting them on our website.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How well will this be enforced? Like if a student is, is talking, you know, saying foul language to a teacher or another employee there, are, are these policies going to be implemented? Because it talks about that, you know, foul language, et cetera, et cetera.
Which page are you going to turn?
Oh, well, it's just in general.
Oh, okay, right.
You know, are the, is that student, it says it will be addressed, taken up, their parent will be contacted, et cetera, et cetera. How well is it going to be enforced? By, by the staff?
What we could do, Dr. Mary, is we could ask for like a quarterly report on looking at some, at the data of, they give us indicators on how well it's enforced. I think that most people would say, yes, it should be enforced, as in the same way we, everyone should say, all the board policies should be enforced, but sometimes they're not. So, I would say that we could do something to help monitor, like where are we? How well are we implementing this? Like monitor that.
My concern over here on page eight, misconduct involving others, you know, you've got bullying. And, you know, I've heard a lot of complaints in which you have students that go around bullying other students, you have students that go around bullying teachers. You have, there's also another one engaged in sexual harassment, sexual abuse.
Those are the things touching one's own private parts in a sexual manner. You know, these kids are, are kids, if, if, these, uh, are observed as an administrator, you know, I mean, I know that some kids get slapped in the hand, and "Mito, don't do it again", and others get reprimanded, others get, uh, expelled, sent to D, A, E P. I think there's, the implementation and application are all over the, all over the board on this. You know, and I think that we need to have all our administrators' principals, assistant principals, and teachers all on the same, on the same page. And I think that we need to make sure that, that, you know, if, if Manito does this, Manito gets a slap in the face, but if it's Mark, Mark, you're going to B A B. You know, uh, that kind of, I think we need to, to ask our, our principals, Mr. Trustee, that, I mean, we need to, to, to be fair across the board, you know? And not because, you know, this one, one person, one kid's mom is a hellraiser, you know, that they're gonna come in and raise hell at your campus, and you don't want that to happen, but why do you turn a blind eye? You know, I, I think that, that we need...
That's what I was referring to, because I know that, you know, it had been, over the past year, has been brought to my attention, in some of the campuses, the kids are out of control, and the teachers really are having a very difficult time. And if they report it to, um, an administrator at the campus, nothing's done about it. And, you know, it's, it's, uh, really frustrating, so we were voting on a policy, you know, code of conduct, and that's what I was asking, basically, that how, how well is this gonna be followed?
Well, uh, trustees already have the comments and questions.
Is it gonna be the same across the board, like, like, that one exists, or is it gonna be selective? Is it, uh, you know, are we gonna have cooperation from our, our, uh, staff in the schools, so that our students feel safe? Because a lot of them don't feel safe.
Again, bringing this before us, trustees, the answer to you, Dr. Mary, and the other trustees is yes, that is our goal. That you have calls, we can't control that. We want to, we want to go in deeper and zoom in to the actual case, because it, it is like a blade of law.
Okay.
You can't speak seventy-five, but how many of us have run eighty? Ten, I'm sorry, okay? But you're not supposed to go to eighty, you're not. So we want to enforce it, yes.
Okay.
To tell you that, the cases that you commented, I can't guarantee you that, but I guarantee, when you were approved it, that we wanted to go for it, that is the intent.
Okay.
Uh, but in the same token, uh, keep in mind that one of the changes that was done is that no student, regardless, for whatever the case may be, and this is a title five felony, can be suspended from second grade down. And in the past, you had kids that were being suspended, that's a state law, that's changed. So even if a kid who says a profanity word can be suspended.
I think something like that.
Well, that's different.
That's, that's criminal.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about, title, title, five penalties, and of course, committing with a gun, or committing with, you know, illegal drugs, that's what I'm saying. But I think like anything else, the, uh, the code of conduct goes hand in hand with chapter thirty-seven. Chapter thirty-seven also has a black and white switch, by the same token, trustees, since we're on the same subject here. Sometimes, when our staff and our administration wants to enforce to the T, then they also give pressure to type, to, to kind of, well, you know, this is my kid's first time, and so forth, and it wasn't his, somebody put it in his backpack, or it wasn't hers, and et cetera. And we go forward, so, you know, we get those calls as well, too, and we have to be very objective, as much as we can with that. This is the code of conduct, it is the law, and we are going to do our best to, our message is to enforce it.
What was the recommendation, Mr. Trustee?
Hold on, hold on.
Yes.
Uh, on page seven? Page seven? Yeah, there's a page seven.
There's a page seven.
Right near the bottom, um, about two-thirds of the way down, you got corporal punishment unless the parent or the guardian upside, upside in writing. First of all, I don't, I don't know about that corporal punishment, that's one. Number two, unless the parent or guardian upside in writing, I would like to see that changed to the parent has to give permission. Because a lot of times, uh, the parent doesn't send that thing back in writing, and it's only a select few that are getting swatted all the time, and the others aren't. So I think that the parent should be, um, signing that he gives permission for you to swat his kid. Instead of, you know, assuming that because the letter never got home, okay, we're gonna go tell him this kid, you know, I'd rather have that. And the parent says, swatted, and I'll tell you one thing, my parents always signed it. Okay? They always signed it, they knew what they had, and, uh, I, I think every swat that I ever received was warranted, and, uh, you know, but I don't, I don't want any of these kids getting swatted without permission from their parents. Uh, so I'd like to see that switched around, I don't know how the board feels about it, I know last year, we had some issues at other campuses. And then the other one is right below that, grade penalties as permitted by policy. So if you're misbehaving, we're gonna drop your grade if wanted. Uh, I don't think that's, is that the intent, who is, who is responsible for this rule?
Well, this is, uh, this is provided by Walsh Anderson, so, uh, I know that as a district, we have it also in our policy, where we do not punish a student as far as their grades, so we also use that, uh, whenever there's any discipline issues, the student will not be affected grade-wise for any sort of discipline, uh, issue that the student will have at the campus.
I totally agree, sir, I don't think, uh, I don't think we're allowed to...
If we're not, if we're not gonna use it, then let's not have it there, because if it's there, and it's to the discretion of the teacher, the teacher says, well, you know what, you were misbehaving, we're gonna drop him down to a C. And if that's not what, what the intent is, then let's just go and take it off. You know, I don't know, like I said, not only one person...
And I think with you, and the, the one you mentioned, uh, there's very, very few swatters in the district. Maybe two or three, maybe two or three. But I do know that all those that do require permission in writing before they do swat. So, and that is something that we've been practicing, so we do need to either change the wording of that, to indicate that.
And even, excuse me, even during the new district registration, there was a question on the, if the parent is, will allow corporal punishment, and they say yes or no, some of them mark yes, some of them mark no, and they sign, so it is in there as well.
As long as, as long as you have the permission, I don't want them to come back and say, yeah, I didn't give permission to my kid, and then we don't have anything to back that up with.
So in the motion, um, whoever makes the motion would need to reference that, so you can change the policy, even though it's not practice, just sort of the quality, policy might be the practice.
Um, is there something in here, in this, that deals with, uh, taking pictures and putting them on, on the website?
All right, it's in our DH local, um, it should be, uh, indicated somewhere in the composition, I mean, on the conversation, conversation, sorry. On the student code of conduct, um, it's, uh, misuse of, of electronic devices or social media.
Well, the point I'm, I'm, I'm asking is, uh, I would think, Ms. Dool, when you're, when you're addressing the, you, or the registry to the new district or whatever, do we have a form that says, hey, if, uh, if Miss, uh, our public relations person takes a picture of, uh, Manito, can we put it on the website?
Yes, that's on the register.
Okay, so we, we got that one covered as far as the likeness of the child on the website?
Yes.
Um, I think the part might, you might be referencing, Mr. Rivero, is on page eight at the bottom, students may be disciplined for threats made outside of school, including website or internet postings, if the threat causes a material substantial disruption at school. Is that also what you were talking about?
I think you're asking for like granting permission to be posted on video media, right?
No, well, now that, we have the, the district website, you know, where that, our PR person puts pictures of our kids doing great stuff, you know? I, I just wanna make sure that I know that, that you have to have a disclosure or a letter.
Oh, yeah, that's different than what I thought you were asking, okay.
Yeah, they have to have a disclosure, you can't just put someone's picture up on a, on a, on a, on the website without their permission. Unless we have like a blanket permission that everybody says, hey, yeah, we're, we, either our child can come out with pictures.
I think those who are in, in extracurricular activities have a, I mean, they're in the public view, I mean, people in the stands taking pictures of them, I think that's understood. But I think when, if you're like the PR person walking around taking pictures of people just walking down the hall, they may not be, have that permission, so we, we do need to make sure that's put around.
I think, I think we need to have, as long as, I mean, everybody is, if you're a student on I S D, do you need to have your child's picture like this, you know, put on the website?
Oh, yeah, that was different than what I thought you were asking.
Yeah.
Is there any other changes in the...
If I'm not mistaken, I think, uh, from whatever member, last year, we would send out a notice to all the students and the parents, asking, it was asking, if they would approve their child to be, uh, have a picture taken, and it would, it would specify that it was in no intent malice, but it was only to promote, you know, the school district or the campus, or things like that. So we, we would send that notice out to parents and for students.
Yeah, because I think that...
At the campus level.
Yeah, and Dool, what we're trying to do, we, we've been trying to get, uh, portray a positive image of Don ISD, is that the correct term, Mr. Trustee?
Yes, sir.
Right, and in doing so, you know, we have all these kids doing all these great things, but do the parents know that their picture, their kid's picture's gonna be on the red? Yeah.
And there is a form, Mr. Dool, you're correct, can I, can I...
That's the sample that goes out to the parents and...
I would, I would think that would be done with, with...
At least, Matt, though, my friends, they keep a, a list of all students who have, um, I don't remember the name of the form, but it's, um...
Yeah, it also deals with the, the use of the technology, the district technology, not that...
Is there any other highlights, changes, big changes in the student code of conduct from the Texas Legislature this year?
Uh, on page seventeen, we added, uh, elementary students ages six through nine have a maximum placement of twenty days at, uh, at the A P.
But, but other than that, pretty much, it's the same as last year? Okay. Thank you.
There's just some clarification on the bullying, though. There's like additional verifications.
On some bullying?
On bullying, all types of bullying.
Okay, okay.
And the limits of the suspensions for elementary students.
The, uh, Mr. Rivero asked a question about the dress code, and dress, the dress code appears on the student handbook.
Yes, it does.
Which is in here, student code of conduct? This is the student code of conduct.
These are, these are basically all the things that kids can do wrong, and the various consequences they can receive. There's also another, um, um, tool that they have, it's called the D M P, Disciplinary Management Plan, where they actually have procedures, they have step-by-step as to what they can do, the options. That's reviewed every year.
Uh, trustees, are, are any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to, okay, I'd like, like to go back to his comment on the, on the corporal punishment. How many of our, our campuses are actually swatting kids?
I was one of them, but I'm no longer at the campus.
I actually took a survey in the spring, do you remember, the spring, Mr. Rivero, in the spring? Because I, I actually, speaking to them in the spring about the corporal punishment, I gave, put in my two cents, my philosophy is that when I became principal at high school, swatting was, uh, being done. Corporal punishment was seen, but I never used it, I never allowed our staff, I never used it, because my philosophy is a little different. And my philosophy was, takes more time, but it needed to be done, you call the parents in, and you sit down with them, and you tell them the rationale of why you did it, because a lot of times, uh, and again, I'm speaking at the secondary, though, it's a quick fix, swat me, that's it, and they're gone. And some of them actually have calluses, and that doesn't make a difference. But so we really wanted to do is, basically, what they're doing now is known as restorative discipline, when you spend time and really find out what caused you to do this, what, why did you do this? And rationalize and so forth, versus a swat, you go in, put your hands to the desk, boom, that's it, sign here, you're done. So that's, that's a, now, as a state, trustees, the state does allow corporal punishment, that's the reason why you still have this. So we had minimal schools, I think it might have been just three elementarys at, at, at Fraser Hem, and, uh, middle school. And after I gave my conversation, they were thinking twice about that, simply because it takes more work to do what corporal, uh, to do the not corporal punishment, but in my opinion, you have a little more results because it does reach the family, uh, whoever the guardians are.
We also added the, the use of our less professional counselors in the middle school. Uh, the hardcore students, if they have issues, uh, will make sure that they get counseling on a, on a, on a pretty, on a routine basis. And, uh, we're trying to get to the root of the problem, sometimes these kids come with issues already, and the only way to get through them is by, uh, addressing those issues, so we use counselors.
Okay, last year, I got phone calls from board members up here, I'm not gonna tell you who they are, but some of the board members up here complained about corporal punishment. What I'm gonna tell you guys right now is that if you want to abolish it, you have the power to do it right now, if not, do not call me. You have the power to do it right now, if you want to abolish it. That's all I'm gonna tell you.
General Counsel, because we're discussing this on page seven, exactly. I'd like to make a recommendation, a motion, a, a recommendation, not a motion, but a recommendation. My recommendation is to approve, uh, the, uh, the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen code of conduct for Don ISD, with the understanding that I would like to recommend to remove corporal punishment completely out of Don ISD, even though we know that the state of Texas does allow it, but as a district, it is just trustees that have, have the authority to say yea or nay, and that's my recommendation.
And the one below it, too.
By the one below, we...
Well, that's permitted by policy, the policy does allow it.
All right, there's a motion to approve the, uh, the student code of conduct?
You mean a recommendation?
He already gave it.
I move.
It's a motion by Dr. Mary, second, by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
I oppose.
I oppose.
Favor, motion carries. Okay, it is, uh, six fifty-three, and we're gonna be going into executive session as authorized by Texas government code, sections five five one, dot oh seven one, dot oh seven two, dot oh seven three, dot oh seven four, dot oh seven five, dot oh seven six, dot oh eight two, dot oh eight three, and dot oh eight four. Time is six fifty-three. Okay, time is eleven thirty-two, we are back from executive session, and we're now in open session. Mr. President Trustees?
Mr. President, trustees. Open session, letter A, discussion and possible action to approve superintendent's recommendation of personnel. Administration recommends approval and discussion in executive session.
I move.
I second.
There's a motion by Ms. Watts to approve, and there's a second by Mr. Billen. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Letter B?
Letter B, Mr. President, trustees. Discussion and possible action to approve district personnel. And this, administration recommending approval and discussion in executive session, specifically rules three, parent profession that we discussed for...
Term of...
Second. There's a motion by Mr. Amila and a second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
In favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Letter C?
Letter C, Mr. President, trustees. Discussion regarding draft forensic audit report. There's no action on this. And letter D, Mr. President, trustees. We have discussion and possible action to approve pending or contemplated litigation. Sentiment matters and or matters where the professional duty under state board requires private consultation with the school attorney. At this time, administration's recommending approval as per discussion in executive session specific to the case that was noted.
I move we approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Ms. Vina and a second by Mr. Amila.
Correct.
All in favor?
In favor.
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 And I will vote again. Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Motion by Ms. Watts?
Second.
Second by Mr. Guedel. All in favor?
Favor.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries.